Good evening, I call it we're the meeting of the West Jordan City Council Committee of the Whole. Tonight is Wednesday, July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. All members of the council are present except for council member PAC who anticipates joining us online momentarily and then in person a little bit later. We're also joined by council office staff, by Mayor Burton, various members of his staff, and a few others in attendance for the meeting tonight. Tonight is a work session, not a regular city council meeting. So we don't have citizen comments on the agenda for tonight. However, I was told that there were some folks who would potentially be attending tonight who hope to address the city council. Therefore, I would look to the council for a motion to allow for citizen comments.
I'll move that we allow citizen comment at the beginning of our work meeting tonight.
Second.
We have a motion by council member White Lock, a second by council member Bloom, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Seeing none, we will go to citizen comment. Even though it's not on the agenda, if you're online and you'd like to speak, please hit the little icon to raise your hand. And then if you're in person, we'll start with anybody in the room who would like to speak. If you'd like to speak for citizen comments, please come up to the podium. Not seeing anyone, so we'll go to those online. The first person we have is Lori Taylor. Let me hit the button to allow you to talk. Just please introduce yourself and let us know if you're a resident of the city. And then you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Lori and I am a resident of Western City. I am in the Copper Valley Estates neighborhood. And I'm here to speak today about the Come and Go website that has been approved by your planning board last night. After that meeting, I still have some concerns and I believe some of my neighbors do too. And so I'm just here to speak on that. And as I speak on it, I just ask that you guys, my council members, to treat this as if it was their own home. Having a gas station behind my backyard is concerning to me because of the increased traffic, increased crime and property value going down. Now, I know there might be some debate on property value, but if we are being completely honest with ourselves, you know, if we had an option to live in a neighborhood free of commercial site versus living next to a commercial site, a buyer is always gonna buy the home that's not next to a commercial site. And also, what's gonna happen if Come and Go isn't successful? If they shut down, is it just gonna be a site for floor eyes? The other thing that I was concerned about was the traffic study was done, but it wasn't done with the flyover that's behind my house. We're gonna have increased traffic from the Copper Hills High School students and then increased traffic coming from Seventy-Eight South and Ninetieth. And then that's just gonna add to the noise and increased accidents. I see accidents all the time on Ninety-South and Mountain View corridor. And then my understanding is also there's gonna be an exit, they're right on Eighty-Six South going to the flyover. I only have a vinyl fence that was put in by my developer. And I'm afraid that if someone's texting or not paying attention, they might run into my backyard while my little girl's playing. And I asked that you guys reconsider putting a fence along that back wall for our residents. And I'm also not sure why there wasn't code for that when you guys were putting up the flyover. But I, let's see, they also stated that there would be a six-foot wall behind the Come and Go. But we already have a six-foot wall. I mean, it is vinyl. I asked that to be a little bit higher just because we can actually, looking out in our backyard, we can see the street and the site visibly, like it's clear and they can actually see into our backyard. So we don't have any privacy. There's a Jordan Credit Union on Forty-Eighth West and approximately Seventy-Eight South. They all have a maecenary wall there and they, and it's just a credit union there. And the Stat Fitness also has a maecenary wall along the resident line with trees that block the residence view. The Quick克Car Wash also has its high-traffic area. It looks like they have an eight-foot wall there. And I don't see the difference with having a gas station and why we can't have a higher wall. There's also a street on Bacchus Highway or a site on Bacchus Highway in eighty-two hundred South where there's a filled with a small park.
So my apologies for cutting you off, Lori, but thank you, thank you very much for the comments. We, we only have three minutes allocated per person tonight. But you are welcome to join us again next week if you'd like to speak again. There's also, if you wanted to send an email to council all, or sorry, council comments at westjordan.utah.gov, we all get that as well. And there's also a phone number if you wanted to add to this. We'll have that phone number, phone numbers on the city website as well. I see there's one other person that wishes to speak, so Jeremy, I'll open it up for you again. If you would share your, share your first name, last name, and let us know if you're a resident of the city, and then you'll have up to three minutes.
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you.
Perfect. Thank you for allowing me to take this time. My name is Jeremy Drayford. I am as well a resident of Copper State here, so a part of this community. And my biggest concern is the safety of others, right? With the traffic and congestion that's gonna increase at that intersection. To my understanding, there's only two ways in. You make a right into the property from Fifty-Sixth and you make a right out of the property. I don't feel that that lot is sufficient and large enough to house vehicles coming and going, just the traffic in general. Also, my concern is it being a spot for students to congregate during schools, school hours. You know, kids will be kids. I'm concerned for my neighbors that would be directly behind them, especially with just their, you know, vinyl fencing, if there's any kind of issues or crime that's booked up, it'd be an easy spot for them to jump the fence and use our neighborhood as a getaway path, which doesn't sit easily or well with myself. And I do agree too with it. If this does go out of business, you know, what is that gonna look like? Is it gonna be an eyesore? What else was gonna be developed there if that does tank, unfortunately? Also, I'd like to, you know, to kind of consider too that, you know, within a mile radius of being in all three directions, right? East, north, and south of us, there are multiple gas stations. I just don't understand the logic by putting another gas station next to a residential neighborhood when you crowd within a quarter mile to the south Maverick. Within a mile to the north, you have a Smith's Gas Station, another Maverick, and then another mile at the road to the east on Seventy-Eighth is a Chevron. Across the street from that is another Suddenly Eleven. I am just baffled. It's a, we're gonna establish another gas station right next to a housing or residential community. Outside of that, so we have the traffic and then the lighting with our neighbors being directly behind that gas station. How's that gonna affect them? I understand the grade and the six-foot fence, but I don't think that's gonna be sufficient enough to thwart those kind of concerns, especially when you have kids. They probably have troubles going to sleep as it is. So yeah, I just wanted to bring forth, you know, my thoughts with the traffic and I'm hoping that the crime rate doesn't increase with that being just a melting pot for people to come, you know, to congest you during school hours and then during the weekend with the racing up and down Fifty-Six Hundred with some of the students there. So again, I appreciate you allowing me to take this time. I just wanted to share my opinion.
All right. Thank you, Jeremy. And then just so the public's aware, council member PAC, oh, let me stop that. Council member PAC did join us online at six oh six P M. Is there anybody else who would like to address the council while we have citizen comments open? I'm not seeing any other hands online or anybody here in person, so we will close citizen comments and proceed with our published agenda. So first up, we have the presentation of citywide survey results from Y Two Analytics. And who's gonna be presenting that? Mr. Anderson, are you giving the intro for that?
If I can do an intro for that, who's before you today is Kyreen Gibb, who's the Vice President of Research with Y Two Analytics. Cassidy would have normally presented this, but we miss her. So in the spring this year, Y Two Analytics was hired to conduct a citywide survey. The slideshow that you're seeing tonight was provided in your packet for the public and for your information. After this meeting, I will email the raw data, the, the open-ended questions and the comments to each of you. Apologies, I didn't get that out before this meeting. But we will have that, so I will turn the time over to Ms. Gibb.
Thank you very much, Alan. So I'm excited to share the results with you tonight, council members. Thank you for your time. This was a citywide survey we conducted to establish a panel of residents to whom we can go back for future public opinion research questions and get a representative sample of resident opinions. So we're excited to dive in here. A few key findings upfront here, and then we'll get into the nitty-gritty of each of these points over time. Overall, we have an average quality of life rating from residents on a zero to one hundred scale of seventy-five, which is quite good. It's comparable to what we see in Taylorsville and Salt Lake City. The things that residents cite that they especially like about West Jordan are the location in the valley. It's pre-proximate to a lot of convenient things, the accessibility, family-friendly atmosphere and safe neighborhoods in particular. Residents are also especially interested in receiving more information or more communication from the city. So we have a large share of residents that don't currently feel a strong sense of community that don't necessarily know what's going on in the city on a regular basis. So there is a lot of appetite for more regular communication or more accessible communication and some interest in just being more plugged into the city, both on a community-to-government level and a community-centered level. And then when it comes to sort of a forward-thinking perspective on the city, we asked residents about their satisfaction levels with various city services and where they might like to see improvements in the future. Overall, residents are quite satisfied with the services they receive from the city. We don't have any city services that receive a score below fifty on a zero to one hundred scale, so mostly passing scores there. We do have a few that are relatively lower when we look at the overall comparisons, but the services that residents are most satisfied with are emergency services, garbage collection, and the drinking water in the city. Yes.
Derek and Brian, don't let that go to your head, will ya?
Perfect. The areas that residents point to where they have the most concerns or identify areas for improvement are street and sort of road surface maintenance, snow removal, and code enforcement. When we ask residents, it averages out, right? When we look at residents' attitudes towards growth in the city, we have seventy percent of residents who say that the city is about the same or better than it was five years ago. And most of our residents feel that the commercial opportunities, the amenities, all of the things that are available to them in the city are quite positive. They have positive outlooks on these things. But there are some concerns about growth and growing pains that residents are expressing. So concerns about traffic and congestion as the Wasatch Front and the state continue to grow, frankly. When we ask about residents' priorities for future development, the things that they're most concerned about are keeping overall tax burden and cost for city services low, preserving land, making sure that we have good recreation opportunities in parks and open spaces, and providing a more walkable atmosphere. So a place for residents to be able to transition between communities and the amenities that they enjoy having in the city. And then finally, a place for children and grandchildren to live in the city. So housing opportunities that are affordable and, and opportunities for future residents to move into the city and sort of maintain the character of the city we love are some of the, the comments that we heard in summation. So we'll, like I said, dive in a little bit deeper in just a bit. If you'll go to the next slide. I'm gonna go through the methodology description as quickly as I can so that no one's eyes blaze over. In total, we had nine hundred twenty-eight residents respond to this survey. And we had about eight hundred of those opt into future panel surveys, which is quite good. We're really happy with that. The survey was offered in both English and Spanish and survey invitations were sent via email and text message. It was an address-based sample. Go ahead.
Can I ask you a dumb question?
Please.
How many surveys were returned in Spanish?
I don't know that number off the top of my head. I will have to dig back into the metadata of the survey for that one.
I'd, I'd be, I'd, I'd really be curious to know that, that if it's, if it's matches the, the the ethnic breakdown and a couple of other things or where that light on that, where that sat on that scale. I think that'd be, I think that would be helpful data as we look at other policies in the city.
Yep, happy to dig back into that. I'll take that as a follow-up. We do have that information in the raw survey data, so I will dig in and check. And I will just note that the language in which the survey is administered is determined by respondents' browser settings. So if their browser is set to default to Spanish, it would have defaulted to Spanish, or they could elect to choose the language based on their preferences as well.
Do you have an age?
We do have an age distribution for residents. Overall, we're quite representative of city residents as a whole, though we are lower than we would like to see among eighteen to twenty-four-year-old respondents, which is really typical for survey research. We sort of struggle to get engagement from that youngest sector of the community. We anticipate that for future surveys that we conduct on behalf of the city, we'll have to do some additional outreach there to boost those response rates.
I just figured with email and text messages, you might not have gotten older residents that don't do that.
That's surprisingly not a problem at all. We have no issues getting older residents to respond. I think too many grandchildren pictures are on Facebook for most of our residents to be not digital native, so. But we do also offer a call-in or help line, so if residents are not comfortable taking the survey online, they can call us and schedule a telephone-administered interview. So overall, the survey data have been weighted to approximate the city population as a whole, specifically in regards to age, city council district, race, gender, and homeownership. So broadly representative, you can see on the map on this slide that we have good coverage across our council districts with slightly higher response rates in districts three and four, if they're ordered correctly according to district number there, in districts three and four, and slightly lower response rates in districts one and two. Next slide, thank you. And we can go ahead to the next one. Okay, so looking at the distribution of residents' quality of life ratings, as I mentioned, the overall average quality of life score that residents give for the city is seventy-five on that zero to one hundred scale. You can see we have a lot of responses clustered around that eighty-point mark, which is quite good. And again, this is pretty comparable to what we see in Taylorsville as well as Salt Lake City. District Four's overall quality of life rating is slightly higher, but statistically, all four council districts are tied in terms of quality of life ratings. When we ask residents whether they feel the city is headed in the right direction or the wrong direction, half of residents say that they don't know or are unsure. And this is, this actually was very surprising to me because we don't see as large an uncertain or non-opinion response to this question very often. Usually, at most, that's around about a third of residents. So to see, again, a full half of residents indicate that they're not sure about the direction the city is headed, can tell us a couple of things. One, it could be that residents are torn. There are really positive things and things that they perceive to be negative happening in the city. But the other oper, or the other possible explanation here is that residents don't have enough information to make a decision on that particular question. And when we look at some of the other responses in the survey, one of the themes that really shines through is that residents are interested in receiving more communication, hearing more about the city generally. Residents who have lived in the city for more than ten years are more likely to indicate that they feel the city is headed in the wrong direction. So some of our longer-term residents are concerned about the way the city is changing. But when we look at just those residents expressing an opinion, at a rate of about two to one, residents feel the city is headed in the right direction. When we look at residents' perceptions of the city compared to five years ago, as I mentioned previously, in total, we have seventy percent who say that things have gotten better or are about the same as they were five years ago. So majority positive perceptions overall. We just have twenty or nineteen percent who say that the city has gotten some degree worse over time. And again, some of the concerns that those residents express are really focused on growing pains, worries about traffic, worries about water, road maintenance, infrastructure, and then housing prices and crime rates are also common responses there.
Can I ask a really quick question?
Of course.
Give back up one slide, Alan, and then I want to come back to this one. So this has a breakdown in the dash, dashed box about residents who've lived here five years or less. Okay, now go forward, Alan. Do we know how many of these residents were here five years or less that maybe don't know if it was, is that, is that a?
So that twelve percent, the full response option says, don't know, haven't lived here that long. So that twelve percent would be those residents who haven't been here for five years.
The ones who weren't here for five. I was just wondering if, if there were like a, a large number of respondents who had been here at least five years who said, don't know.
And for the previous question, yes, is the answer. For this question, it's that twelve percent who have been here for fewer than five years. Yes. Next slide, please. Thank you. So when it comes to things residents particularly like about living in West Jordan, some of the things that pop up are, again, the proximity to downtown Salt Lake City, but still being a step removed. It feels safer. It feels a little quieter. Residents are really happy, though, with the accessibility of various amenities and the neighborhood character. It's a nice family atmosphere and they feel that it's family-friendly and safe. We asked residents a series of questions about some city characteristics. Overall, we have just about three out of four residents who agree that West Jordan is a great place to raise a family. About two-thirds of residents who say that West Jordan has enough parks, open spaces, and recreation areas to meet their current needs. And about three out of four residents who say that overall they feel safe living in West Jordan. All of these are really positive evaluations. When it comes to a sense of community with other West Jordan residents, though, this is where we see the largest neutral response. So one in four respondents indicate that they don't agree or disagree, aren't quite willing to say that they don't have a sense of community. But again, there's some opportunity there to build a sense of cohesion with other residents, to engage residents more with one another and with the city government. A few more city characteristics overall. We asked residents how they feel about the retail opportunities in the city, and overall residents are quite satisfied that the city has all of the types of retail they would like to see. That's everywhere along the Wasatch Front, though. Everyone wants another Trader Joe's. When we ask about city services generally, two-thirds of residents say that overall the city does a good job managing city services. Residents feel that the city does provide all of the services they think a city should on the most part. Sixty-one percent in total agree with that sentiment. And then fifty-three percent of residents say that the city is growing and developing in a positive way. One in five residents not expressing an opinion there, and just about a third of residents disagreeing with that sentiment. So again, some concerns about the growth and development and, and the direction the city is headed among those who express an opinion. And then the last item here, we asked residents whether they feel their job opportunities in the city for people like them as somewhat of a measure of the economic health of the city. But the more we ask this question, the more we're realizing that residents don't think of job opportunities within their municipal boundaries as a strong indicator of quality of life. So this is something that I think when we talk about economic development and opportunity, residents along the Wasatch Front, more so than many other places, are not particularly interested in living in the same place that they work. And the commute culture means that a lot of residents would prefer to look outside their city boundaries for job opportunities. Go ahead.
Yet interestingly, we often hear concerns about air quality and traffic. So I'm.
I will be the first to say that public opinion is far from consistent.
So just tossing that out there, that, that even though when it's phrased this way of, do you wanna work near where you live? Well, maybe I do, maybe I don't. But do I want better air quality? Do I want less traffic? Everybody says yes. So.
Wholeheartedly agree.
So there, so yeah, anyway. You know, it's, that's right. But the other thing, I think it tells us is, is that people aren't, that, like what you say, the commute mentality, the qual, their quality of life is not tied nearly as much to where their job is as other things in the community.
Yes.
Now, if they could get a job in the city and ride their bike to work every day, talking to the mayor.
They should run for mayor.
They should run for mayor and they have a great quality of life, right? Or ride for mayor. So I, I, it's, it's kind, I, I think that the, the message there is, is that if we could find the right jobs to keep people here, they're, they're, it would be okay, but their qual, their overall quality of life is based on a decision that I need a job to pay for things, and if it's someplace else, we're okay with that.
I think that's very true. Yeah, we have pretty close to a normal distribution of responses here with about a third of residents saying that they agree there are job opportunities. Again, sort of reflecting that positive outlook on the city's economic health. But about a third of residents neither agreeing nor disagreeing with that sentiment, suggesting that either they don't know or they just don't particularly care about whether there are job opportunities for people like them with their skills in the city. It really is a strong characteristic and a trend we see along the Wasatch Front that this particular measure is just not indicative of residents' perceptions of the health of the city or their quality of life. Next. Oh, you're fine. So looking a little bit more closely at sense of community in West Jordan, we have a strong majority of residents who say that this is at least somewhat important to them. Eighty-four percent of residents say that having a sense of community with residents in this, other residents in the city is at least somewhat important. But only fifty-two percent currently say that they feel that sense of community with other West Jordan residents. Some of the ways that residents are interested in fostering a sense of community or continuing to build that sense of community would be service projects or opportunities to get involved with their neighbors and friends or fellow residents. More activities for youth in the city, more holiday celebrations sponsored by the city. And then a third of residents also point directly to just increased communication from the city. So I think it's important to note here that this is not necessarily a reflection of the number of events that the city currently sponsors or the type of events that the city currently sponsors, but a lack of awareness or reach of information about those types of events and things that are appealing to residents. When it comes to public opinion, perception is the reality, and these are the things that we're hearing from residents that they would like to see or hear more about. Thinking about city service performance and overall satisfaction with city services, as we mentioned, fire and emergency medical, garbage collection and recycling, and culinary or drinking water are at the top of the list here for the highest-rated city services on average. And then our relatively lower-rated city services on average, surface maintenance on city streets and roads, plumbing, zoning, and building services, and code enforcement, all coming in below sixty on that zero to one hundred scale.
Question, is that normal for code enforcement?
Question, is, is that normal for code enforcement to be low and fire to be high?
So fire and emergency medical and trash collection and recycling are always at the top of the list. It is rare that I have a city where those two aren't the most highly rated. Um, code enforcement is an interesting one because that really is reflective more of residents' attitudes and perceptions of city code and of how their neighborhood is changing or not. Uh, generally, in cities that aren't growing rapidly or we're not seeing a lot of change in the character of neighborhoods, uh, code enforcement isn't something that really comes to mind for most residents. We see more neutral opinions than negative opinions. This is something where I would be interested to know to what extent uh, residents have expressed concerns or what volume of calls we've received about code enforcement in residents' neighborhoods. Um, because that's generally what that particular rating is associated with. But I, as a blanket statement, residents don't attach code enforcement to fire and emergency medical.
Right, but so they're not really saying that, like, firemen are great. They're not saying code enforcement people are bad. They're saying, my neighborhood doesn't look the way I want it to look and therefore I blame that on code enforcement.
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, because our code enforcement department rocks.
I believe it.
People were more personally responsible for their property, they wouldn't have that issue.
If, if, if Brock had a staff thirty times more people, he'd do the big job.
Councilmember Green, did you have a question? Okay, um, the question I had, can you go back? So planning, zoning and building services is pretty far down there. I'm wondering of those who responded, how many have actually used those services? Because I'm assuming that the respondents aren't consuming the services there.
This was my next caveat, actually. So we, over the last five years, have seen declining ratings for planning, zoning and building services uh, all along the Wasatch Front that correlates more with the growth of the city and additional uh, buildings, whether that's residential or commercial being built than with individual experience with planning and zoning. So my hunch, and this is a little bit of well-informed speculation, uh, is that that evaluation is based largely on attitudes towards growth and development, uh, more so than planning, zoning and building within the city specifically.
So, so to clarify, when the survey questions were, were sent out, there's nothing saying, did you use this particular service? What was your perception of your interaction there?
We did not. We offered an opportunity for residents to say they didn't know or not applicable if they didn't have an opinion about a particular city service. Uh, but residents largely and people generally are less inclined to opt out of a question if they think they know what it means.
Thanks.
Yeah. We can go to the next slide. This, there's a lot of data on this slide, but all of this is really just to illustrate that we have a lot of consistency across council districts in terms of residents' perceptions of city services. So it's nice to see that there isn't one area of the city that's giving significantly lower ratings for a number of city services or feels uh, especially underserved relative to other parts of the city. Uh, when we asked residents about potential city services that they would like to see that aren't currently offered in West Jordan, uh, most residents are really satisfied with the services that are offered. There is some desire for potential improvements to specific city services. Uh, so with the winter we just had, I'm not surprised to see that residents are concerned about snow removal and potential improvements there. Um, street and road maintenance is a common request for improvements uh, across the Wasatch Front. Um, and then we have some residents that are interested in additional uh, trash or recycling or just neighborhood cleanup services. So uh, the dumpster placed on a curb and allowing residents to engage in that sort of spring cleaning activity broadly. Um, and then we did have some residents point specifically to a desire for more recreational amenities on the west side. Uh, looking specifically at residents' attitudes towards communication, um, we asked residents how they currently receive information from the city and how they would prefer to receive information from the city. Uh, it is worth noting that this was a text and email-based survey. So seeing email at the top of the list for how residents are currently engaging and how they would prefer to engage is not particularly surprising. Uh, but that said, we really see a digital lean for this uh, current source of information and preference. So the city's social media is sort of meeting residents' needs for those who would prefer to receive information that way. Uh, and emails from the city, there is a little bit more opportunity to inform residents who would prefer to receive information from the city via email. Um, and overall, we have about two thirds of residents who would prefer to receive some degree more communication from the city.
Just like to point out that one percent are currently getting their city news from city council meetings, but none of them want to.
That's Emily. She's the one that comes.
Is that a scare? That's like nine people, so.
Is that, is that a scare? That's scary, isn't it? That there's, there's one percent of the.
Actually, can you tell us how that compares to other cities?
It's, it's quite comparable. It's rare that we have.
Okay, Utah, yeah, that's sad.
As the preferred information source.
You don't want to be part, then don't complain.
I thought they just didn't like me, so that's good.
Or they just don't see us as a trustworthy news source like KSL.
Uh, when it comes to, yeah, that was very prescient. Uh, KSL is the most common news outlet for West Jordan residents, uh, followed by Fox thirteen and Two News. Uh, the West Jordan Journal comes in as the highest sort of city-focused uh, channel for information with twenty-two percent of residents saying that they get local news or news in general from the West Jordan Journal. Uh, we, we asked residents if they have contacted the city in the past year to seek a service or information or to file a complaint. And we had about a third of residents indicate that they had. Um, among those residents who have contacted the city, we have really high satisfaction ratings. Um, overall, the personnel in the city are described as friendly, quick to respond and ready with an answer. So really positive sentiments on the whole. Um, most of the dissatisfied responses had something to do with either not receiving the answer that residents were hoping to receive from the city or being left with additional questions. So uh, one resident in particular mentioned that they didn't get confirmation on what, when a project would be completed, so.
So me, oh, sorry, Chris.
I was just gonna ask if we know how this one, how this metric compares with other cities.
Uh, the satisfaction or the outreach rate?
Satisfaction of residents contacting city offices.
Satisfaction is comparable. Uh, we have, I would say we are right on the average for the Wasatch Front overall. We tend to have eighteen to twenty-five percent of residents who are some degree dissatisfied after reaching out. But that's three out of four residents who indicate that they're at least somewhat satisfied is positive measure and, and quite similar to what we see in other cities.
So do you have where they filled in the blank and gave answers?
We do.
And when can we get that?
Uh, so Alan has that and that will be distributed to the council after this meeting.
Great, thank you.
Yep. Um, and most residents are reaching out to the city by phone. Uh, just one in four of our respondents said that they use the city website primarily. Um, when we asked residents about their priorities for the future growth and development of West Jordan, um, overall, the one priority that residents point to as the most important is keeping costs for city services low. So residents are particularly concerned about maintaining their, their tax burden for city services, keeping that manageable. Um, preserving land for parks and open spaces is also a high priority. Nearly two thirds of residents say that's very important to them. Um, and then in third place here, if we're sort of ranking priorities by the share of residents who indicated that something was very important to them, is having a place for children and family to live in the community. So again, future generations of West Jordan residents, uh, having a space for them, having affordable housing for them. Um, walkability, affordable housing specifically, and then bringing in development opportunities that contribute to diversifying the tax base and, and keeping the cost of city services low. Uh, come in sort of second tier here. Um, and then the lowest priorities relatively speaking are supporting and maintaining a mix of housing types and providing more neighborhood access to public transit. Uh, looking specifically at the affordable housing question, um, we wanted to get a sense of whether there's some disparity geographically or demographically uh, among residents who are especially interested in seeing affordable housing opportunities in the city. Uh, District Two residents are more likely than others to say that they are, uh, they say that affordable housing is at least somewhat important to them, seventy percent in total. Um, those who don't currently own their home indicate that that's more important to them than current homeowners, which I think is intuitive. Um, and then our lower income residents, those who make less than fifty thousand dollars for their household annual income are almost unanimously interested in seeing more affordable housing opportunities in the city. Um, we also have a little bit more enthusiasm among our oldest residents, which again, I think uh, correlates to both the desire to have room for future generations of West Jordan residents to live in the city and thinking about uh, constrained incomes or fixed incomes among our oldest households. We had a few questions specific to an additional city cemetery. Uh, we had a total of thirty-seven residents say that they would support the city purchasing additional land for another city cemetery. Uh, forty-six percent of residents have no opinion on the issue, neither support nor oppose. And seventeen percent of residents indicated that they were opposed to having an additional city cemetery. Uh, we also looked at this question broken out by demographic subgroups. Uh, you can see our forty-five to fifty-four-year-old residents and our fifty-five to sixty-four-year-old residents are slightly more favorable towards the idea. Um, our lower income residents relatively speaking also have a more supportive opinion about purchasing additional land for a city cemetery. And the last few slides are really more of an appendix. This is a look at the demographic composition of our respondents and comparing that composition to the census estimates for the city as a whole. Um, as I mentioned earlier, we have a little bit, a fairly significantly lower response rate among eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds than we would like to see. Uh, we got two percent of our survey respondents who fill in that age or fall in that age range. Thirteen percent of residents, according to the current census estimates, are eighteen to twenty-four years old. So again, more outreach in the future to that particular cohort. Um, we're a little bit more overrepresented of the twenty-five to thirty-four-year-olds, but otherwise, we're looking quite good in terms of age distribution of residents. Um, our racial and ethnic composition and our gender balance are pretty close to what we see uh, from the census estimates within the margin of error there, so. Uh, employment rate's pretty consistent with what we see for the population as a whole. Uh, education, we skew a little bit higher for survey respondents. That's pretty common, but we do have a good balance of residents who have some college education or less. Um, and our income distribution is also quite good based on the census estimated median household income. Uh, seventy-two percent of our respondents are married, then sort of overrepresenting that cohort here, which is quite common when we're looking at a share of residents who are responding to surveys, a little bit more civically engaged, a little bit more established, uh, is a common pattern that we see. We have just over half of residents who say that they have children in their households and most of our respondents have one to three people in their household currently, which maps quite well to what we see from census estimates.
So just a question. I only took one statistics class in college and the only thing I remembered was that there were lies, damn lies in statistics, so. Uh, the, the, um, with, with seventy-two percent of the demo, uh, that the surveyed population being married, does that skew the survey at all? Because they might be answering for more than one person or?
So the only, the only concern we would have with an outsized share of residents being married is if we find that married residents have significantly different attitudes uh, than their single counterparts or different priorities for city services, different experiences with how the city has changed. Um, because we've sampled randomly and because we can look at sort of the cross-tabular breakdowns of married perceptions versus the perceptions of single divorced, et cetera, residents, um, we're pretty confident that that's not a bias that we have to worry about being introduced here. Uh, a majority of our survey respondents are homeowners. Uh, the census estimate for owner-occupied housing in the city is seventy-two percent. We're about eleven percentage points higher than that here, but overall, uh, pretty satisfied with that distribution as well. Um, we have a good balance of residents who have lived in the city for fewer than five years, about a quarter, uh, as we mentioned earlier. And then a pretty widespread of residents who have lived here longer than that. So twenty-one percent have lived in the city for six to ten years, twenty-three for eleven to twenty, and about a third of residents who have lived here for twenty-one or more years. Um, when we asked residents how long they plan to stay in the city, uh, we have thirty-eight percent who say that they plan to stay in West Jordan for twenty-one or more years. Uh, so a lot of potential lifers or current lifers uh, in the city. And that concludes our whirlwind tour of the data. Um, any questions? I know that's a lot to digest, so I'm happy to take follow-ups later if it's helpful, but off the top of your head. Okay.
I'm just gonna say, thank you for the data. I, from, from my perception, and I could be wrong, but there's a couple of things uh, that, that here that are, like I said, Derek, don't let it go to your head. Uh, but you know, we all know that we have a great fire department.
It's because of Paw Patrol. That's why you scored so high.
Marshall, yeah. Tell Paul that's what got him there. Anyway, uh, the, uh, there, there are some of the, there's a couple of things like community, community tightness and a couple of things. We've talked about a couple of those. But obviously, to me, if I'm sitting here, uh, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, but communications and sense of community really are what the um, two biggest. If we were to take two major themes going out of this survey, it seems like those two issues, communications and sense of community are the things that we really have to work, that we need to work on as our number one priority. Is that a, is that a fair assessment?
I think that's right. It seems like the, the lowest hanging fruit and the most potential return on investment is to communicate more clearly and more frequently with residents and to help foster that sense of community. Uh, so those, those things I think shine through really clearly here. Yeah.
Not seen any other questions.
So Brian, uh, Councilmember Whitelaw came up with a great idea that we should give out snow shovels to all residents so they can, they can shovel their community, communities together. Except I wanna, I want.
I figured they could do the roads, right? They want the roads plowed more.
Give them, you know, we'll do, West, West Jordan will go, snow shovels.
And we'll throw a dumpster out there.
Exactly, yes. Carry your community event.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Gibb.
Thank you so much for your time.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes, Council, uh, this, this kind of sets the foundation. Uh, we are planning to do this um, survey again and use this as a baseline. So you'll be able to measure the, the difference, the change between year to year as you look at the priorities and the, how the residents feel about the changes that you're making. So I just wanted to, to be aware of that.
I have one thing to add that I would like to say to that. For me, it would be really helpful if before questions were sent to the community that the council could review them and give input.
We, we had a, yes, council meeting where we did review the questions, I think in March.
But you're talking about future ones.
Yes, and we will do that. Yes, I, I failed to bring that up.
I'm a mother. I, I give two standard instructions routinely.
Yeah, but we will run the. We will run the questions by you. There'll be, I think what we planned on doing was two thirds of the questions would be consistent year over year, so you could measure status and a third would be kind of the current events. And we will bring that to a work session later this year for you to review.
And I'm gonna suggest. I, I know the, the way we did it this year where it was, we were all up against some deadlines and we were pushing hard and fast to get this done and get it out. My suggestion is, let's be a little bit more proactive, slow and methodical so that we don't miss anything and that we do this. So we're not, we, we were, we were kind of rushed this last time and I know it was because of the RFP process and the way we did it. And I'm just suggesting we don't do that this year.
Now, the, the hope is that the next survey, you'll have the data in time to have influence on how you budget your priorities.
All right, so that brings us to our next item for this evening, which is introduction of potential development at about sixty seven hundred west and seventy eight hundred south. Mayor Burton, would you like to introduce our new friends?
I would love to. We have Kyle here, Kyle Brostrum. Right, who is here and he has purchased some property in West Jordan and desires to develop that. Now, I'm not gonna tell you what he's going to do. I want him to tell you that, but we're so excited to have him here and the prospect that he's bringing to us. And the development that this will bring to our community, which will be a benefit. Oh, I'm not going to spoil it. Kyle, go ahead and take it away. And if Sam shows up, we'll let you know.
All right.
But what was Kyle?
Kyle Brostrum. It's like Nordstrom with a bro. So, and I, I represent the, the new owner of that property and, and so first of all, I want to thank Mayor Burton and his staff. They've been excellent to work with so far. We're just getting started in the process. We have a long ways to go. One of the reasons why we thought it was a good idea to get it in front of you today is there's still a lot of work to do and you'll probably hear a lot from us in the coming months. And we just wanted to make sure you knew who you're working with and, and like Mayor Burton said, hopefully get you excited about what's coming. So, my, my my role in this, I, I, I'm the vice president of strategy and business development for HCA Healthcare. HCA Healthcare is the largest healthcare, private healthcare provider in the US, based in Nashville, publicly traded, which means we pay taxes. And we have one hundred and eighty six hospitals in twenty one states. Three of those states are part of the division that I cover, which is Utah, Idaho and Alaska. In addition to hospitals, we also run and manage own other care sites, urgent cares, physician practices, surgery centers, freestanding mercy departments. Locally here in Utah, we're known as Mountain Star Healthcare. You, you may know some of our hospitals, St. Mark's Hospital is our largest hospital in the state of Utah. Our flagship for our system in Mill Creek, we actually, I came from a, an open house this morning where we had just had a ribbon cutting event for a new tower there. So we are very much in, in growth mode in Utah. We're excited about the growth of Utah. And an area we have had our eye on for quite some time has been this area, West Jordan. We did, you, you may have, if you followed the news, we, we did. We had an agreement with Stewart Healthcare, who was the previous owner of two hospitals that reside in your community. And we were going through the process to acquire those hospitals. We're really excited about the opportunity to work in this part of the community and unfortunately we were, we were told we could not proceed with, from the Federal Trade Commission. And so, and so our next step is to, was to figure out how to engage with this fast growing part of the community. We know that Salt Lake County, about forty percent of the residents of Utah reside in Salt Lake County and most of the growth is occurring on the west side of Salt Lake. And if you look at a map and you look at all, where all of our, our major healthcare campuses are, they're on the east side of Salt Lake. So that is a problem for us. It doesn't allow us to provide the care that, that we feel like we should be able to provide to the residents of Utah, Salt Lake County and to West Jordan. So that brings us to this site here. We were able to close on, on this site earlier in the year. It's eighty six acres. I understand that, that the previous owner had several plan, different type plans here. We're still early in the process and I guess what I can tell you is we are, we're working diligently with, with Mayor Burton and, and, and the, his team right now on preparing to submit a proposal, an application for not multi, what am I thinking of? Mixed use development. Like, what is the zoning? Mixed use development. Most of the property, it's eighty six acres. We don't need all eighty six acres for, for a healthcare campus. We need about half of that. So we're looking to provide and facilitate a mix of uses in here. So obviously the majority of it would be a healthcare. If, if we can get Costco, great. That would be fantastic. Internet, I work for Intermountain Medical Center, right?
I know, right? I brought it up and people like, where, where have you ever seen a hospital with Costco? Murray?
Yeah, I worked there for a little while. It was really convenient, actually. So. But no, it'd be, it'd mostly be a healthcare campus, hospital, medical office. Buildings. But the remainder, we want to bring in some retail. We're working, we'd bring in retail and some residential as well. So, really excited about this project. Very happy that we were able to secure this site. We think it's a great site. We, we've had a great experience so far working with the city and we look forward to working with all of you.
So, we've got Councilmember Whitelock, then I've got a question for you as well.
Eighty six hundred acres.
Eighty six.
Eighty six acres. Out of the eighty six, how many are you planning on using for the hospital and medical?
Yeah, so we think we need about forty.
Oh, half, a little under half.
Yeah, yeah. So Lone Peak is another one of our hospitals off of I fifteen in Draper. The, the site that that hospital sits on is about forty acres, so it'd be about the same.
So, we're very cognizant of the impact that infrastructure has on development and vice versa. Knowing constraints that we have with existing utilities, I'm kind of curious to know what your anticipated timeline for build out looks like.
Yeah, so we're working on that. I don't have a definitive timeframe on each component. I'll tell you. Our goal would be to start development. We'd probably start with, you know, medical office and outpatient facilities first and then a hospital. But we, we would expect all of that to happen in the next probably three to four years. So, that's the timeframe.
Follow up question to Chris's question then. Do you know how a hospital compares to residential? For water use, for water use. Are you a big water user or hospitals big water user?
I don't know about, I don't, I don't know that question. My understanding is that, that hospitals are not as, as high of a water user as residential. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Lower than residential, but higher than some other businesses.
Yeah.
I understand it's water purification businesses, for example.
Which to that point, that is one of the reasons I wanted. Yeah, but this is one of the reasons we wanted to, to make an introduction early because we know with the, the rapid growth in your community, you're balancing a lot of different projects and we just want to make sure that you are familiar with what we're thinking about so that as all of these different projects get introduced and, and you're, you're juggling, you can throw us in the mix.
Yeah, we know we have more developers requesting water than we have resources to fulfill that right now. So having you here to let, let us kind of know what's on the horizon is very helpful and we'll watch for those applications to show, to, to appear so that we can make sure that those, I, I don't want to say water rights, but the availability of water gets placed where it can help them help them, the larger part of the community quickest. So, thank, thank you very much.
Yep.
So, so even just having this on the agenda tonight, I've had some people asking me about what it's gonna look like, where it's gonna go, how it's gonna, do you have any ideas? And this, the topography, the shape of this parcel, everything else is kind of unique. It's it's a triangle. It's not, it's not a rectangle. Most hospitals are rectangular in some way or another. So do you have ideas of like, would you put hospital on the south part, retail in the middle? How, I mean, how do you have an idea?
Yeah, so the, so the healthcare campus will, will take the southern part of the, the property and then, and then that northern part for, for residential and, and the retail that we would think that we would look at, at providing retail pads for you know, the things that, that complement a hospital. So, you know, coffee shops would be good. Something good for people that work around the clock. So things like that, not, not a huge retail footprint, but something that would also hopefully benefit the members of the community that live in that area to provide some convenient services.
Right, yeah. Interesting. Okay, yeah, I look forward to seeing that. I, I thought when I was looking at this and I had heard about this coming. I thought maybe the other half, not, I, I didn't think Costco. As I was thinking, I'm thinking, well, I know Jordan district is gonna need a high school out here somewhere and another forty acres about, you know, forty five acres. Could get creative and, and squeeze a high school and a hospital together and everybody'd be happy.
Well, I, I'll, I'll tell you, so we don't plan on master developing all eighty six acres. Our preference would be to develop our portion. And if there's a, a buyer that's interested in that northern part, we would be very interested to talk to them. Yeah.
So maybe Councilmember Jacob, we should as a council talk about doing a letter to the school board. Inviting them to, to reach out.
To evaluate and look at it.
If there's four of us that wanted to do that. A question regarding, we have residential along sixty four hundred. Would you try to match something there or do you know?
We don't know. We don't know the details right now, but that's certainly our intent is to not be an eyesore, to be a, a good community partner. You know, it's, a hospital is a twenty four seven operation, so there are some challenges inherent in that, but being able to landscape and to position the hospital and, and those services in a way that mitigate the impact on the homes is what would be our.
Thank you. I just know we have at least one member here of that community and I'm sure there are others listening in. Two, two members, yes? I don't know. Maybe two.
Three, if you count council.
Well, yes, but not on the council.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can you tell me how big St. Mark's campus is?
So St. Mark's is built on a very small footprint. I think it's only thirteen acres.
Oh, wow.
But it's a two hundred and fifty bed facility, so it's, it's really crammed in there.
Two of my kids were born there, so. The, you mentioned Lone Peak being built on forty acres. Lone Peak still has a lot of room to expand, right? The hospital that's there isn't forty acres.
No.
It's much smaller than that.
Yeah, yeah, and that's why, so the reason why we would want so much acreage is because our intention would be a long term community asset and, and we're not thinking twenty years, thirty years, we're thinking a hundred years plus.
Right, and building it out piece by piece is, is, yeah, cool.
Yep. And not just a hospital, medical office buildings, clinics, surgery centers, that we need room for all of that as well. So so just like Lone Peak, if you think about that, the immediate impact, it's still a lot of green space around, around a hospital. It takes a long time to fill forty acres for sure.
My comment was gonna be, as somebody who's watched Lone Peak grow from the I, I work, I work out that way. So, I've driven past, I've driven past Lone Peak when it was an emergency room. And actually been to the Lone Peak emergency room a couple of times myself because it's quieter to go out there than it is to go to some more hectic hospitals here in the valley. But the, but my, my point was is that I, I, the, the thing about the, like Lone Peak is, it's built next to a resident. If, if you think about, just, just to, to put this in perspective with Lone Peak. Lone Peak's got residential houses around two sides of Lone Peak.
And a high school.
And a high school. And so, the, the, the way, the way the Lone Peak's been developed and I, with the son, being on Draper City Council, I haven't heard any complaints. I really haven't, you know, he'd tell me if Draper residents were upset over Lone Peak and he's never said anything, so. I'm looking forward to, to I think the hospital in a lot of way, well, in a ton of ways, is going to be a whole lot less intense use than it's gonna be a really good use, but I think as, as far as the intensity and impacts to the area. I think it's, I, I think it's gonna I mean, we obviously have to deal with employees, but, and, and employee traffic and we will deal with that, but the that, at the end of the day, that I think the impacts to the neighborhood are gonna be less than some of the things we've seen that were anticipated. So I'm looking forward to seeing the plans and seeing how this is all gonna shake out. And I, I was gonna mention something about helicopters and helipads, but I'll just leave it at that. No, we, no, we have, we actually, just so you know, we have an ordinance that deals with helipads in the city.
Okay.
And hospitals are specifically exempt from the helipad requirement. So if you want to put a helipad in there, you, it's, you just have to deal with the FAA.
An airport. I think it's a great addition to the community. I know personally, I go to the U of U and, because it's really the only center like that, that's west of Bangor. And it's extremely busy.
Yeah.
And so I think this is gonna be fantastic for the residents to be able to have another option because it's a wonderful facility and, but it's just busy. It's, you know, tough to get in, but I, I don't know where your consideration is on something like this, this being a parent who has taken a child to the University of Utah when I, who's had to be transported up to a children's hospital. I don't know what your thoughts are of adding some kind of wing or something to provide that. Because really, the only way to do that is to go to the University of Utah.
Yeah, there's no children's.
We don't have any kind of specialty children's clothes. That would, that's just, just something to look at as you're thinking about building things out. It would be a great resource.
That's, yeah, we we'll take that under advisement. There's certainly an opportunity there.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brostrum for being here and sharing a little bit of the vision with us and we look forward from, we look forward to seeing you probably frequently.
Yeah, you will. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if the council is okay with it, I'd like to swap the order of the next two items we have. I think the discussion on the business license code will take a little bit longer than discussion about the Kern's Improvement District Emergency Connection Agreement.
If we're okay paying Brock more overtime.
It's either Brock or Mr. Murphy. So, if we're, I'm not seeing any objections. So, Mr. Murphy, I understand you're gonna speak with us.
But I didn't see you sitting back there, Dave, sorry.
Thank you, council, for hearing this item tonight. This is about an agreement for emergency planning preparedness, mutual aid during a disaster. Be it any type of disaster that would affect the water system. Kern's Improvement District and city have been discussing for past, oh, six, eight months. Emergency use connections between our two systems. This is out on Seventieth South, fifty six West area. It would only be used and turned on in times of emergency. They'd be open by agreement between each utility, managers. And utilities would reimburse each other for whatever water use goes through to the other system. So specifically, Kern's Improvement District would build one of the connections and the city of West Jordan staff would build the other connection. First connection here is at fifty six and seventieth. This is near Kern's Improvement District's well, right there on the corner. And it's very simple connections with valves normally operated in a closed position until the emergency pops up. Go ahead, next slide. Whoop, back one. And, and this is the other connection for West Jordan up on Adventure Way, which is at the top of the hill, just as you pass the signal at fifty six. And the reason for the two locations where we couldn't just operate one is simply pressure. The pressures at each location have to be such that water will flow from one system to the other. In this case, Adventure Way and Kern's Improvement District would flow into us and down at fifty six, just at the bottom of the hill here. It would flow into Kern's Improvement District from the city of West Jordan. Okay, last one. Any questions? Okay, last one, any questions?
I have three. Um hypothetically, yes, Kerns area, if that water district got, you know, annexed into a city in the future. What does that do to this agreement? Number two is renewal on page six of eight, no. The renewal is fifty years, in fifty years, who in the city is going to be tracking that? Because my experience with long-term things like this. They get lost, no one knows it even exists, and then boom, a school district's responsible for millions of dollars improvement. Um third, I would request that on page six of the eight pages. It it currently has the C A O and his name and and email. I would ask that we also put the generic mayor one, but I think it goes to the mayor and Shannon, but it's just the mayor at West Jordan.
Yeah.
Uh so that, because people change places and and it's a fifty-year agreement, and I'm sure Corbin will be here in year forty-eight, but in year fifty, I'm not sure. Um and. I I thought it was kind of strange wording for a legal document to say um. That it would periodically be. Uh parties will meet periodically, like nothing more specific. What does periodically mean in a fifty-year contract? To me, that periodically could mean every century. I mean, I I I think that's pretty vague for a legal contract, so I just think legal should look at that again, I think. And number four, can you tell me what will this do for the road disruption for putting these in? Will it be a week, a month? Seventy of South, should we plan on a couple of years?
Let me, let me take the last question first. Uh the installation of the water lines will take two weeks or less in each location.
Oh, great, okay.
And and they can be, they can be half a rotor at a time and traffic will adjust. Um over the open cut that's gonna be required. Um as far as the legal issues and changing the language on the form, I think that can be accommodated as well. Uh periodic review, um utility departments routinely meet um at conferences and so forth. Uh we re- we meet all the time down with Jordan Valley as our wholesale provider between districts. And so those periodic meetings are already occurring. Um as as far as the length of span of time who would track that, that would be the city recorder and utility department. On specific agreements like this that are interlocal. Um remind me your first question. Sorry.
Just if hypothetically, uh Kerns got annexed into a city.
Um then you just changed the name on the agreement um between parties, that's all.
Still be the water department.
Still be water departments of each uh jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you.
Can can I, can I just add to the question? Um Kerns Improvement District is separate from the Kerns Township. So whatever happens to Kerns Township should not affect Kerns Improvement District.
Water, okay, okay, thank you, but the same communication, not uh more of a generic email with Kerns. Improvement District should be as well on our side as well as their side.
Yeah, and we can plug those into the uh act- actual form of the agreement, I believe. As far as uh email communications. So whatever whatever form it takes to make sure that we're covered in fifty years.
I I'm just gonna throw in a couple other other things here. Um I don't, so thi- this is more for the attorneys. I don't like the fact that we're ma- putting the party as the C A O. The mayor is the chief executive officer of the city and we can and that the terms of the contract can say. The mayor or his designee instead of the chief administrative officer and designee, I think that it really does. I mean, the mayor's, the mayor's in charge of the city. Um uh you you know, sometimes he doesn't think so, but you you know. But I I really think that in that part of the contract, I think you should say mayor and not C A O. If the mayor chooses to make the designate the C A O, I'm good with that, but that paragraph and and Councilmember Whitelock's right. That it should say mayor and it shouldn't have individual names in it. The other, the other one that I have concern on is paragraph that I thought that I maybe I maybe I missed my little interlocal agreements one-on-one. Uh but we have Councilmember McConaughey signing the interlocal agreement. Normally, it's the council that approves the mayor to sign the interlocal agreement. And so the the that signature block needs to be changed to the mayor's. And if the mayor's gonna be signing it, the mayor can be responsible for it in that paragraph.
We can take a look at those concerns that when you're dealing with an interlocal agreement, there's typically. Or in some cases, I should say, there's approval from the legislative body that's required. I frankly was not the one that reviewed this agreement, so I'm not sure if this would be one of those agreements that falls into it. And I'm sorry that I don't have that just on hand right now, but I can confirm that before we get to the the signature point.
It's typical that we have the resolution, interlocal agreement for the T R C C that we did not too long. Though we are the ones that authorized the mayor to sign that interlocal agreement, so it it's typical, typical that we do the resolution. For the inter- and that's typical for most interlocal agreements is that we authorized by resolution. The mayor to sign it, so.
Yeah.
Uh signature block, and like I said, I I I, yeah, anyway, you've heard my concerns, so.
No, certainly, I appreciate that, and and Councilmember Whitelock the point on the the notice there uh is a point well taken, just for reference. In the notice provision there, there are alternatives for that, and so in the event that the email address for Mr. Lee was no longer valid. They would not be able to provide notice to the city that through that means they would have to choose one of the other channels there, and so. Uh you know, the the agreement would still be able to operate and function in the way that it needed to if that address wasn't valid, excuse me. Um but it is a point well taken, um if we're gonna have an email address there, thinking about the future there is uh important to consider. All right, any other questions or comments from the council on this item? All right, seen none, we'll go to item C. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. And item C is the uh updates to the business license code. Mr. Anderson, I believe you're gonna introduce this one, and then the council committee members that worked on this will have a little time.
Yes, so uh back on November sixteen twenty-two, the city council reviewed the current business license ordinance. And referred the item to an ad hoc committee. Those ad hoc subcommittee members were Councilmember Whitelock, Councilmember Green, and Councilmember Bloom. That subcommittee met three times since uh that meeting and worked with um Mr. Chandler, the city attorney, and also Chase Ames. Who is an assistant city attorney. Um on the, in the minutes from that meeting. Uh which is included on your R C A, the council had fourteen bullet items. Um that they wanted to have reviewed, that they assigned to the subcommittee to look over. Um I'm not gonna read all fourteen of those, but they are on your R C A, taken from the minutes of November sixteenth. Um the three meetings, they addressed these, and what's in your packet is the result of those. Now bringing it back to the full council for a final review and based on any updates or. Uh chosen amendments that you would like to make, then we can bring it back for adoption at a at another meeting. And with that, I don't know, we we didn't really have a chair of the ad hoc committee, but uh Councilmember Whitelock, Councilmember Green, Councilmember Bloom. Can chime in on the the three meetings, and then we also have Mr. Ames and obviously Mr. Chandler here from legal perspective. And then um Brock is here from code enforcement and oversees business licensing for his input.
So I just wanna start by thanking Mr. Ames and Mr. Chandler, because they both came in like after we kind of had our first powell on this. And then um you know, they, the first meeting was a little rough. Uh but we worked through that and we, and I feel like the end product. Um it landed where, at least from my perspective, I think we landed where we were headed for, so thank you. The only thing that I did send an email to Mr. Chandler on, and it's really not a big thing, it's more of a how you. Read it and and how it feels, just on on line five ninety-eight, it starts out with deny. Instead of issue the license, and for me, I just, I just sent him a thing that said, maybe maybe start with the positive. Issue the license and then deny, so other than that, thank you for the work. And it was a great committee to work on. We had a lot of good discussions, um as you can imag- imagine lately and um in depth with the players.
I'll jump in. We're okay going left or right, Pamela? Uh or right till the end, whatever, uh whichever way you're looking. Uh yes, thank you for putting up with us. Uh some of the meetings uh were arduous, but we got through there. Uh couple, a- as to to the council, you'll notice. Uh as Councilmember McConaughey refers to it, there was the deliberate, there was a liberal use of the delete key.
Uh you.
In line one-twenty-one through one-fifty-four.
Yes, we we struck a lot of verbiage. Some of it was, as you started reading, that that it 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 was, it was, we worked for the Department of Redundancy Department. Um and everything was redundant, uh and so we we tried to eliminate the redundancy, make it uh match. A L J stuff better, a whole bunch of things. Is it exactly where I want it to be? No, I would have liked to have cut another twenty-five percent out of this ordinance. Uh Mr. Chandler's laughing because he knows where I'm going. Because we had some long discussions about that, Brock and I have had some of those same discussions. Is it, is it where I wanna be? No. Is it where we could come to a a good agreement as a starting place? The answer to that is yes. And I think that what we, I think this is the kind of thing that we. I- in in, uh you know, if you're, if you're in the, if you're in the artillery corps, it's not ready, aim, fire, it's ready, fire, aim. Right, that's you, 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 you gotta, you gotta forward observer out there. And they call in the target and you launch a shell and you know where it hits. And then you've got that forward observer telling you where to adjust, and then you fire another shell and you hit, and then when you hit the target. Then you fire for effect. I think that this is, this is, this is this uh ready-fire aim. We've got, I think we've got at least an eighty percent, eighty-five percent solution. Um I think that one of the things that is, as this council uh I think is good at doing. Is that in a, you know, we'll get this implemented, get it to the staff, let the staff work with it. And the year from now, eighteen months from now, we revisit it. And that's when we can start to say, do we really, a- and you know, do we really need a couple of these sections? In the last eighteen months, if we run into it, is it really gonna make any difference if we keep these sections in? Or is it better, is it better symbology to make it business-friendly? And so that's, I I think that, like I said, I think we're eighty percent there, we still need to work on chapter two, right, Brock? We still need to work on chapter two of this ordinance, but as far as chapter one goes, I think we're, but you know. Eighty percent is a great batting average in the major league, and if uh if the Utah Jazz could shoot free throws by with eighty percent. Uh they would be in the, they'd actually win the NBA championship every now and then, so. Uh that's my thoughts on on this particular item and and uh. I I I'm I'm glad we're getting to this point and uh to to get this so that we can. Help businesses but still maintain what we need in the city.
Not too much to add, because Calvin, um Councilmember Green said most everything, and after we spoke earlier this week, because I still had some concerns that I really wanted taking care of and. And fixed, but I like the idea of this is a great move in the right direction. For making the licenses friendly and open and and a pro- progress for our city. And I know we've been very passionate about certain aspects on this, and I appreciate you guys taking that passion from us and implementing. What we're really looking for, and I look forward to actually looking at this in the next twelve, eighteen months and refining it even more. So we can continue on the vision that we see with this, and I appreciate all the hard work on this and and. I I'm excited that we've made real, real progress.
Yeah, I just like to thank the committee and all who's worked on it. As I went through this, I was very impressed with the work that was done on it. And you know, the time that it was taken, so I just wanted to express appreciation for that. I would say you're farther than eighty percent, but hey, you know. You're closer to it than I was, but there you go.
And anything we can do to be a more business-friendly city? I think we've taken some big steps, so this is awesome. Thanks.
So going through this, I really appreciate a lot of the modifications that were made. Uh stripping the language that potentially penalized those who have already paid their debt to society. Um I was, I was, I was glad to see that removed. Uh some of the other things that are a little bit more nuanced, uh I kind of wanna find out from Brock. How many times has been an enforcement action that required determining percentage of ownership in a business that was doing business under another name? Uh seeing that come out made me happy. Um there were some additions that I thought were very appropriate as well. Um closing incomplete applications after sixty days, so we don't have to maintain stuff in perpetuity. I can only imagine the administrative nightmare that that's gotta be for folks. I really appreciate the feeling that I got looking at this, that not all of the modifications that are here seem like they came from council. It seems like some of these were probably staff-inspired. Um so I wanna say thank you to the committee and to the staff for working together. Um there are so many good ideas that come from staff. Uh really appreciate when a forum is created that allows us to work directly with the mayor's staff to find some of those fixes that. Some of them have been sitting on for years, saying, I just need the right time to tell somebody about this and we can fix it and make life easier and. Save, save employee time, save employee cost, and save residents headaches, so I. I I really don't have anything else that I want to throw into this, any modifications I make, there there are some little things, but I don't think it's worth it. I I don't think it's worth it right now. Um is there anybody else who has any request before this goes back to staff? And then comes to, I I assume this has to go to the planning commission, then to public hearing, then final approval, or can this just?
Shouldn't have to go to planning commission, because this, it's not a land use. It's not a land use. Commissioner just stays with the council.
Business licensing, sometimes, in in my mind, I thought there might be some overlap, but if there's not, that makes me feel better, so. How soon we do we expect this to be brought back to the council for ratification?
Uh the earliest you can do it with council rules would be August ninth, if you wanted to bring it back, it's too late for the twenty-sixth, that would have been due last week.
Nights for I.
Okay, beautiful. If there's nothing else, we will, on this item, we will move on and watch for that to come back shortly. Um that brings us to administrative items. The only administrative item that I have is, is we're looking forward. Especially future work sessions, we are relatively light on topics, so if there are items that the council would like to discuss, please let me know. Know that uh there are a couple that were added for the next uh next regular meeting that touch on the budget. But there's anything specific, please let us know, because there's, there's room in the agenda, is Councilmember Green.
I I was just going to ask, do we know where the sewer lift ordinance is? We had, we had reviewed it, we had given it off to staff and asked to be put into the planning commission hopper. And we haven't seen anything, so if somebody will.
Pull up on that.
We'll track that down, uh because I know we had it almost done, it had a couple of minor changes. And that was a land use ordinance, so it did have to go back to planning, and it was just supposed to go there, make a couple of tweaks and run through that process, so. If we can figure out where that's at, that'd be great, Mayor.
So one item you'll notice that uh was modified after a conversation with Mr. Anderson. Unfinished business is now on the committee of the whole, so that if something does come up last minute, it's published, it's agendized. And we can talk about any of those items on unfinished business at any work session, so simplify things a little bit. Councilmember Worthen.
Are we still looking at moving back to City Hall end of October?
Twenty twenty-four?
Valentine's Day.
Part that we are waiting on, the major part, is still on schedule for that day, but I need to warn us. Even though it is, there've been other places that up to the delivery day, all of a sudden, they changed the delivery day. But we have been contacting them on a regular basis and having verified that that date is still good.
but we have been contacting them on a regular basis and having them verify that that date is still good, and the last verification we got is that date is still good. So, hold your breath.
Wait, in the world of construction, they don't always meet timelines?
Well, usually do. Oh, that's why you're shocked.
Any more electrical puns, Mayor, and you'll be grounded.
Are we gonna get in this year?
A plus, there, there's, there's a positive for council member McConaughey.
We're gonna be able to have at least one more meeting for the year in City Hall.
Yes, and we can do it like we are here without air conditioning and without other technology.
Sure, I would suggest for a work meeting, um, we just got back Y two analytics survey, I would suggest that we have a meeting where we discuss those and what we're going to use with that data, because if all we did was do a survey and we're not gonna use the data, might not have been the best use of funds, so that I would request.
If you need a second for that, you've got it.
Yeah, Mr. Anderson, can you add that to the list?
Yep, I will.
All right, the only other remaining agenda item is adjourned, so I would look for.
I'm adjourned.
Second. Motion by council member Bloom, second by council member Worthen. Council member Green will take credit for that one. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, we stand adjourned.